That time of the seat always comes.
Hi, Ms. Newton.
It was, it was.
It's my joke of the day.
I appreciate it.
Hi, how are y'all? Okay, great.
To make sure both of you can say.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much. Y'all, it is 3:03 PM on Tuesday, May 13th. I'd like to call our fiscal year 25, '26 budget work session to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll, please?
Brenham.
Present.
Pugh. Little.
Here.
Livingston. Teresa.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Aline.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English. Newton. We have a quorum. Madam Chair, I would like to know that Councilwoman English is going to be joining us this afternoon online.
Thank you so much for that notification. Next is item number two, adoption of the agenda. ACA Thomas, did we have any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am, no changes to the agenda.
No changes, ma'am.
Entertainer motion?
Move to approve.
A motion for approval with Councilwoman Baron, a second, I heard Councilwoman Branham, a discussion. Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh. Little.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Aline.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English. Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. ACA Thomas, I will turn it over to you to discuss item three, our general fund.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, if I might indulge the council just for a moment, just to tell you a few things that you have on your desks. You have a new loosely version of this. This is our updated recommended budget book. If you would, just throw everything that was inside of your binders out before and replace it with this. As you know, during the budget season, processes change and numbers change as we get updated revisions, so we would ask that you just use that. Also, this afternoon, you have an item that looks like the one that I'm holding up that says Council Budget Workshop, General Fund and Debt Service, May 13th, 2025. This will be the presentation that we will be working our way through this afternoon. So I appreciate your indulging me on that.
Just one, one, sorry, just one minute. Just to make sure we're all clear on the same page. ACA Thomas is there. There's a printed document sitting in front of us. We're to open up the binder, take out some papers, and replace with these said papers. Everybody good with that? Okay.
Madam Chair.
You'll recognize.
May we also have a digital version of the updated? Absolutely. We'll send that to you. Thank you. Any other questions?
No questions. I just want to point out, just for those watching, this is a work session today, so no action will be taken. This is just to today walk through the general fund portion of our budget. We will continue to have our readings and public hearing during our regular session council meetings. Okay, ACA Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may ask everyone to follow along on the Council Budget Workshop handout that was given to you. Sort of to give you an idea of what we're going to be going through today, on page two is the agenda. It shows that we will, we will walk you through the strategic plan and how it, how it is intertwined into the general fund budget. The general fund overview, the general fund details, new position recommendations, and our debt service. I'd also like to point out that if there are questions related to tax and millage, Auditor Paul Brawley is with us this evening, and he would be able to answer those, and we will be happy to recognize him at that time. So moving on to the next page, under Strategic Budget Initiatives, if you would flip one over. This year, we were very cognizant of trying to identify processes in our budget that, that directly related to each of the six goals that are within our strategic plan. Under foster good governance, that is exactly what we did, was by making sure that those, those initiatives that we aligned and that we recognized did follow the other five goals. In investment economic development, this year, as part of our budget process, recommended and approved by council earlier this year, is the development and funding of the public-private partnership. The P3 for Economic Development, which is the Columbia Area Development Partnership. On July 1st, 2025, it will be implemented. These employees will remain Richland County employees until December 31st, 2025, with the P3 paying for all of their costs associated during that time period. The county will issue payment from revenues based on, collected based on a budget request presented by the P3. Because that is a special revenue fund, you will actually see that request as part of Thursday's presentation. Moving to the next page, to commit to financial responsibility. The county has a commitment to continue to follow its fund balance policy of maintaining 30% to 20% to 35% of prior year expenditures in unassigned fund balance. These are funds that are set aside to be able to address unforeseen circumstances that may arise in the county. This year, and as part of our budget process, we're recommending new positions are repurposed, are used, are developed by repurposing frozen or vacant positions that have been vacant for more than two years. By doing this, we are actually only reallocating funding to fund the gap of these positions, and we're also not include, not increasing headcount at the county. We've also proposed to align with the ordinance that you all passed last year with the short-term, short-term rental ordinance, that we would fund a business, a revenue inspector for the Business Services Center. This will be the only position that you will see that we will recommend funding for the full year because this position will immediately generate revenue to offset expenditures in the general fund. On the following page, there's a graph that shows our unassigned fund balance. What I'd like to point out here is that in previous years, the county has recommended using fund balance to bridge the gap between revenues and expenditures. In 2024, as you can see in the green, we did have to draw on that fund balance to meet our expenditures. In 2025, we also estimate that we will have to do so. But in 2026, we're purposefully recommending that we not draw on fund, on unassigned fund balance. The reason for that is, as you can see, if we were to do so, we would potentially take our fund balance, we would potentially be in violation of our fund balance policy. As such, this could be seen adversely by the rating agencies. With the 2025, if for some reason our expenditures do come in under, under expected levels, we may not have to draw on that fund balance as much as we're projecting presently. But we do have a month and a half left in that cycle, and so we're unsure at this point whether we would or not. So if I, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have related to fund balance.
ACA Thomas, if you would, can you repeat that again, just one more time?
Yes, ma'am. In prior years, and here we're showing only 2023 to 20, to projected 2026, the county to, to balance its budget has projected to use unassigned fund balance. Fun, unassigned fund balance is fund balance that is set aside to be used for unforeseen circumstances that may arise for the county. In 2024, as you can see in the green bar, the county actually did use unassigned fund balance to actually balance its budgets against expenditures. In 2025, we do anticipate that we will again have to draw upon unassigned fund balance to achieve, to cover our expenditures through June 30 of 2025. This may not happen if we're able to minimize our impact from some expenditures, but we just are prepared in the event that we had to. As you recall, we both recently did a budget amendment that would show that. In 2026, we are purposefully not recommending drawing on unassigned fund balance as doing such would potentially put us below our 20% defined fund balance policy and thus have us under consideration by the rating agencies at a potential downgrade.
Thank you. Can you clarify, I guess when I'm looking at the chart that's shown, there appears to be where the blue bar graph is, does not touch the gray line. So does that mean that we are already?
At present, those are just, those are just stacked charts right now. So no, we are not below fund balance at present. If we were to expend all funds, we may be very, very close. We would, however, if we did not, if we proposed this coming year, we believe that if we propose to use unassigned fund balance to balance the general fund, we would fall below our fund balance policy of 20%. At present, if we were to do that, looking at just where the number is right now, that's falling at about just under 16% in FY '26.
I just want to pause right there, just because this is something that there is a recommendation and is, is not been something that's been recommended in the past. So I do want to pause for a little bit to make sure if council members have any questions or need clarifying information to understand why this recommendation is coming and what the impacts mean for having a balanced budget. Councilwoman Newton? Teresa?
Oh, okay. We're very polite over here. So I kind of have a question, but mostly have a comment, which is just to thank you for raising this so early in the process. I do think it's important, and so I'll just, I've just made a written note that as we go through the budget process, there will be times when I'll just say, would this require us to use our fund balance? But I, I just find this a really helpful prompt, so thank you.
Councilwoman Teresa?
Thank you. And I guess ACA Thomas, is, do we need to be thinking about building up fund balance more or contributing back to fund balance?
It certainly would be something that would be worth considering because as expenditures rise, so must the unassigned fund balance. If they stay on par, it's an inverse effect because as the expenditures rise, our fund balance policy states that you will have 20% to 35%. Right now, we're just looking at 20. We need 20% of the prior year's expenditures in unassigned fund balance. So as we look at, we will be using 24 space lines right now because we don't know where 25 is going to fall in. But once we get to 25 and we know exactly where those numbers fall, we will have to look in future years at increasing that. You know, as expenses rise, we do need to increase that unassigned fund balance.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Recognize us.
Thank you. I, I do think that, you know, I don't want us to assume as we have this conversation about fund balance that even the general public and even maybe some people on council or even some people sitting in the room today understand what it, what it means if we go below our fund balance outside of, you know, we're now violating our policy. But could you, ACA Thomas, go into detail as to, you know, what, what happens? And what happens to local government when we go below our, our fund balance? And are there, what are the ramifications that come along with that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for that question. The, the unassigned fund balance with us, keep in mind that an average month is 8.4%, 8.33% of your expenditures. To, at 20%, you're, you are under three months in unassigned fund balance. So if we were to have a catastrophe that stopped the flow of resources in for the county, we would only have, we would have less than three months on hand in unaside fund balance to be able to cover any situation where revenues were to be diminished. For instance, business license to be able to be uncollected, things of that nature. The results of those things can be several. Number one is it can put pressures on the county from a cash flow perspective. That's the least of which, while it's important and we always want to be able to be a good steward of the county's money and to have enough cash flow, there are some temporary ways that you can address that. If you're between, just, just in a moment, just in a short-term cash flow crunch. However, the larger impact is that when you fall below those levels, your rating agencies, who actually are the people, just like a credit bureau for the average employee, the average person, actually looks at saying, how creditworthy are you? Currently, the county is one of a few counties that has a AAA credit rating. AAA is the absolute best that you can get, and it's because of good financial measures and good financial practices. To fall below that, rating agencies would have to consider, does Richland County still qualify for a AAA rating? If that were to be lowered, our borrowing costs, and in a, in a situation where you might have an unforeseen circumstance, catastrophic circumstance, you might need to access cash that you may have to borrow. Your borrowing costs would also go up, and thus your debt service and millage related to that would have to go up.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask one follow-up question?
Yes, ma'am.
And so with that, you speak of catastrophes and, and things of that nature. Could you give us an example of what that, what a catastrophe could be?
I could give you two in the last 10 years, the 2015 flood and COVID.
And, and so it could possibly be, or could it possibly also be lack of federal funds flowing down or state funds flowing down?
It definitely could.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Branham?
Thank you. To, to what extent, or if any, was, you know, these last few years expenditures impacted, supplemented, inflated, whatever you want to call it, by one-time COVID funds?
The last few years, very little, except for some of our capital purchases and capital products, we did projects. We do have a few contracts in a few of our emergency, our public safety areas that are rolling off currently. This would represent roughly $400,000 this year that are included in this budget.
Okay, so it's not some amount that's probably artificially pushing the 20% number higher than would be expected as far as future years that don't involve one-time COVID funds and expenditures?
The one-time COVID funds are not, not the driver really for this issue. The driver for this issue really is the fact that inflation has, has been significant over the last, since 2019. And we, as a county, have specifically made, made efforts to not have to impact the public negatively on the, from a property tax perspective. However, there does, there does come a point where things do come to a reckoning. You know, for instance, some of the costs that are the drivers are some of our technology-related costs and other things, as you'll see in our presentation later. So it's really just that those costs are now catching up with us, and we can no longer address them by looking at fund balance to potentially cover them.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Aline?
ACA Tom, just for my edification. So, fund balance, is that better? Exactly how is that funded?
The fund balance is, is funding that builds up over time. It's from prior years where it may have been collected, and I don't, I must say, from prior to 2019, I really haven't taken a deep dive into where our fund balance came from. It could have been from even prior to Act 388, which imposed tax restrictions on increases and, you know, on the administration of property tax in this area. But it is money that is, that the county has that has built up over time that is divided into three categories. One is committed. Those are funds where we, we absolutely cannot spend that money. It's going to be paying your debt. It's going to be paying things that we are required by statute or by contract, you know, by other area, by contract to actually pay. The other is unassigned fund balance. These are amounts that are set aside that have a specific purpose. And one such item that I'll bring to your attention on that is that the county levies 3, 3.5 mils annually for capital improvements. As a, as an administration, we have been very intentional about ensuring that that money does get put into an assigned fund balance and that it's in the following year is being used to do improvements to our buildings, which have not been done over time, to sort of address the long-term issues and maintenance to our buildings. So those are what we call assigned fund balances. The unassigned is, is exactly what it says. It can be used for any purpose that council deems it to be necessary for. But it's more like your, your savings account if you're at home and you're waiting for, knowing that you're going to have to have tires at some point in time, you try to build it up a little bit further so that you can go buy those tires for your vehicle. Yes, please.
And just a follow-up to that, I think in response to Councilwoman Teresa's question, you said that at some point, council would have to look at ways to replenish the fund balance going forward? How would that be accomplished?
Hopefully by efficiencies as we start to build our programs, and as we, as we move forward, there may be an evaluation of the things that we're doing and how can we improve our processes to become more efficient. There have been, over the years, we've really tried to address what was council's initiatives in our strategic plan, not the least of which is investing in our employees. And as we start to do that, we hope that we will find that we bring on employees that are better able to help us to be more efficient and to find processes such as, you know, technology that will be able to make us more efficient. Councilwoman Livingston?
Could I add to that, too? Perhaps some miracle, robust, robust, robust income, tax revenues, and economic level factors could also do that.
That is absolutely correct. Sir, you know, currently, we do have quite a lot of new economic development ventures out there that, that may become adding to our fund balance or adding to our collection, our revenue collections.
Any further question on the unassigned fund balance and recommendation from administration for fiscal year '26? ACA Thomas, carry forward?
Thank you, Chair. On the following page, as to our initiative to plan for growth, part of our budget this year does include funding for the impact fee study that council has indicated that they would like to, for us to, to look at. This would also potentially generate revenue for other projects that may not have to rely specifically on general fund revenues to, to move forward. They will be looking into EMS, fire, water, sewer, road maintenance, and public safety with these funds if approved. Additionally, to, to achieve public positive engagement, as we were having our strategic planning forum in Rock Hill earlier this year, one of the, one of the resounding issue, areas of support that council recommended was to move to a mobile app for our ombudsman's office to allow, to allow citizens to be more engaged by themselves without the assistance of individuals, and we have actually included $150,000 in our IT budget for this year. Questions? Councilwoman Newton?
Well, I already raised my hand. I apologize for this being in the weeds, but as we look at that app to make it easy for constituents, I know that there are a variety of ways that those function. I would hope that it would also be an app that made it efficient for county employees to, to respond and that it wasn't just a, hey, get more issues faster, but it was a, we can also respond faster when we're out and about.
Yes, ma'am. Not only to be able to respond faster, but to provide the accurate answers as well. Yes, ma'am. On the next page, related to establishing operational excellence. If you recall, back in FY 2023, we implemented, implemented a compensation study that was approved by council. That was a grade and step program that provided for 30 pay grades and 20 steps in each grade to allow employees to develop a career path. In 2023, we invested $10 million into that program for employees. In 2024, another 4.45, I'm sorry, in 2024, it was $10 million. In 2025, another $2.1 million, and this year, in 2026, we're proposing another $2 million to actually implement the step program for employees. Lastly, as I mentioned earlier, we will be only proposing five new positions for the general fund budget. There were 38 requested of these. We are proposing that four of those be half-year positions, and all of them are being, being created by repurposing existing positions without adding additional headcount and liability. And I'll take any questions. If there are none, I'll move on to the general fund overview. And the, the next bell chart slide that you're going to see on page 10. This sort of explains the, the instance of where we are today and why we are where we are. If you recall, as I said, since 2019, there, up until last year, there had been no tax increases. And last year, there was only a one mil increase for our general fund. During that time, however, you had peaks of inflation that reached up at 8% where our tax, our tax percentage growth was well below 2, well below 2% in all given years. While we're a little bit closer now, keep in mind that your inflation is compounded. While it may only be around 4%, 3%, 3% right now, it has been compounded every year since 2019. So we're, while it looks like the bell curve is getting closer, what's actually happening is that the wide band of difference is starting to, to get more flat because it's not growing as quickly, but it's still, the, the impact of all of these years added on top of each other of inflation are still, still in our rearview mirror. Any questions? Councilwoman Weaver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Thomas, on the inflation versus property tax growth, the property tax growth, is that total collected? Or is it like an increase in the average bill or?
That's as a percentage over totally, over the prior year in total collections.
Okay, so it was like maybe up 6% from the year before, et cetera, et cetera. Okay.
I can't think of a time where, where our tax bills in total, where our, our tax collections totaled 6%. As a matter of fact, you know, this year, it was up just over. As a matter of fact, you know, this year, it was up just over 2%.
Okay, thank you.
To the next one. The next graph that you're looking at actually shows you our historical millage. As you can see, since 2019, up until last year, our millage had remained flat, and this was intentional because we were all on the throes of what was the pandemic in 2020, and trying to be cognizant of what this would do to our citizens. We've drawn on fund balance to be able to cover our costs through those times, and been very intentional about the programs that we funded, and the number of positions that were funded, and being as efficient as possible, knowing that we have more development there that we have to do. However, with the 2026 budget, to not incur a use of fund balance, it is our estimation that we would have to go well above the current mil cap that is proposed, or that has been shared with us by the auditor to achieve this. These are just staff's back-of-the-envelope calculations. So I'm happy if anyone has any questions to yield to the auditor on, on what this might, what this might look like.
Yes, please. I'm sorry, Ms. Newton, did you have something before?
I just wanted you to repeat that sentence, and then we'll let our auditor expound.
So since 2019, we had remained at the same mil, number of mils collected to support the general fund. While there was some growth typically in this, you would only look to $2 to $3 million in revenue growth per year with your expenditures growing ahead of that. And I apologize if I didn't explain it very well before. Last year, we did recommend a, an increase that council did approve. It was for a 1 mil increase. It took it to 61 mils last year. However, at 61 mils value this year, it added approximately $3.8 million in general fund revenue. How, what we actually need is nearly 15 million, which is about $10 million over the, the no-mil increase.
Hey, please, sit with, um, all right, so, Mr. Auditor, were you going to share anything?
Madam Chair, members of council, in order to accomplish the, the budget that Assistant County Administrator is referencing, it's going to take an additional five mils above what we have currently. And that's with the current estimates that we have.
You recognize, Ms. Livingston?
Ms. Thomas, what he stated is, 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 is based on your projection of, of all the budget amount that, what I'm getting at is, if, if, if he's talking about the mil increase, at the rate he's talking about it, I'm trying to figure out how much of an increase you need to have.
This would generate if, about 145 million dollars in property taxes, 145, 146 million. Last year's generation was 131.
That answer you? Madam Chair?
That's the dollar amount difference in the mil, projected mil value.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct. The, the no-mil value was about 130, a little more than 135 million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman English, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What does that look like for the average household?
For the average household, the
Yes, sir.
The five mils will equate to a $20 increase in, in taxes on a legal residence, a person that owns a home and resides there. For a person that is rental property or other property, that's going to be $30.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Madam Chair? Recognize, Councilwoman Newton?
Thank you. And so, just to be clear for me, this additional five mils for our general fund needs are the needs that you, our staff, have asked for. My question is, does that include, for example, millage agencies that come and have said, we want more? So would that be on top of the five mils that we just discussed?
I'll yield to the auditor.
This is strictly for the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I guess I want to point out, too, just for clarification, your question, because you said, is this what, you know, staff has asked for? And that's not quite it, because as we know, departments submit budgets, administrator reviews them, and then he provides his recommended to us. So this will not necessarily cover all of a department's requests. It is covering what the administrator recommends. So if we go outside of the administrator's recommendation, that is something different. So I just wanted to put that, I know you know, but I'm just putting that out there clearly for everyone, because this doesn't cover everything that departments ask for. This covers what the administrator recommended.
Madam Chair?
Yes, you recognize, Councilwoman Taratio?
A clarifying question for Auditor Brawley. So you mentioned the, the $20 on a, on a 4% household, and I didn't quite pick that up. I think you said average household, or is that per 100,000 dollars?
That's per 100,000.
Per 100,000, okay. Great. Thank you for that.
Yes. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, um, and so just to clarify again, the five mil increase is the cap?
That's above the cap.
That's above the cap?
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilwoman Newton?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll wade into the silly question waters, so, so that I'm processing this to me. So it's above the current cap, so to make this happen, council would have to vote to increase the cap?
Uh, you, the general fund has some look-back millage that was not used in previous years, so you're using some of that look-back millage.
Okay, just, just trying to figure out how you go above the maximum, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. ACA Thomas, um, okay, hold on. Councilmember Brannan?
I'm so sorry, one more. So with the reassessment last year, we, we used some of the look-back then, didn't we?
A small amount of it, yes.
Okay, how, do you remember how much?
I'm thinking it was probably about four mils, three or four, 3.5, close to four mils.
Thank you.
And so, this is, ACA Thomas, you're sharing this to show based upon the administrator's recommendation, this is what the millage would look like to achieve his recommendations, which essentially is county operations. And so without meeting this millage, then we are not able to achieve those things in his recommended budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor.
Thank you.
ACA Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you will, now, I'd like to recognize Director Wilkerson to come and walk us through the actual presentation, the rest of the presentation.
Welcome, Director Wilkerson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we are on slide 12 of your presentation. And at this point, we, we may refer to the recommended budget book as well, but all the information is in the presentation, so don't feel like you have to go from, go from one to the other. So on this page, we really have some historical data, and then, of course, the administrator's recommended budget. So we've got our 2024 budget, our 2024 actuals, because that has been finalized by our auditor. We have the 2025 budget. I do want to make a note that this 2025 budget includes the budget amendment that was just passed at the last council meeting in May. We also have the requested budget, so this came directly from departments and staff, and then the recommended budget, which is, as Ms. Mackey mentioned, is the administrator's recommendation. So you can see at this time, it's about a $15 million increase over the 2025 budget amendment. You know, about 6% of this increase is related to personnel. So as ACA Thomas mentioned before, the administrator is recommending to continue the compensation study, so do the 2.5% in October of this year for all employees who are eligible based on their performance appraisal. This also includes a 4.6% increase to health insurance. This has been mandated to us from the state, so we are on the PIBA health insurance plan. So even though we're an optional employer, that cost will be transferred to us, so this is on the employer's side. It also includes some new positions that we'll talk about in a few minutes. We had, we also had a request for reclassifications from departments. So when we talk about a reclassification, that might mean a promotion, that might mean that the job description itself has been, you know, looked at closer through the compensation study and through our HR partners, and they've decided that, you know, that, that position needs to be upgraded. And of course, all the payroll taxes and benefits that go along with those. From the operating standpoint, most of this is related to professional services, as we discussed at the, at budget amendment time. But we also had some upgrades in the IT section. I think we all know the cost of technology is increasing every year, and we are seeing that some of our softwares and subscriptions, that they are, they're kind of getting to the point where the, the company is saying, you've got to upgrade. You know, this is, this is end of life for some of our Microsoft programs. I think you've probably heard that at your own jobs as well, that Microsoft is, is kind of pushing everybody to Microsoft 365, and it is a very expensive program. So we want to, of course, maintain that, so there is some increases to IT. And then from the professional services standpoint, that's mostly related to, you know, what we talked about, the budget amendment, the detention center facilities, EMS, and, you know, we can, of course, get into those a little more. I do want to take a moment to also address the increase to transfers out. So you'll notice that that's an increase from 15 million roughly to 19 million. Just wanted to give y'all a reminder that, I think it was actually two budget years ago, the council approved a $4 million assignment for affordable housing. Since that really, you know, is starting to, to gain a little bit of momentum, and there has been further allocations from the ATAX accommodations tax revenue, this next year, we're going to actually establish a new fund, so a new special revenue fund for affordable housing. So you see that it does increase, but it's really just an increase due to using that assigned fund balance and moving, moving that, that money to where it should be held, and so that all the affordable housing allocations can be held in the same fund together. Any questions on this slide? Thank you. So on the next slide, I did want to just, you know, really show graphically the increase that we have seen from our professional services account. So here you have the 2024 budget, 2025 budget, prior to the budget amendment, and then the 2026 budget. You'll notice here graphically, this is about a 30% increase in professional services in two years. And professional services really means our, our contracts. So these are things that, you know, that are really outside of our control. So we have some contracts out there that, you know, based on your approval, they, they, they might have a 7% increase each year. They may have CPI plus, you know, plus, plus. And so we've kind of noticed over the last couple of years that this is an area where we have historically not budgeted enough. And, you know, we've been able to kind of make it by, having some savings in other places, and this is really, this is the year that it, it's kind of catching up to us. So, you know, with the budget amendment that was completed a few weeks ago, that was about a 8,000, or I'm sorry, about an $8 million increase. Most of that was related to professional services. So with this new budget year, we had to keep that 8 million, and then increase that as well as, to cover what the contract increases were. So certainly a drastic increase over the last couple of years, but something that we had to capture in the new budget year. On the next slide, we really switched gears a little bit to the revenue. So I know ACA Thomas has talked about this a little bit, so I'll just spend a few minutes on this page. So our overall projected revenue for FY '26 is roughly 235 million. This is about a 9% increase over the prior year. Our general fund transfers in are roughly 8.5 million. And if you'll recall from previous years, about 5 million of this is related to the cost allocation plan, where the other funds are paying for the services that the general fund provide, provides. So this could be payroll, HR, accounting, finance, all of those internal services that support all of our other funds. Additionally, this includes a transfer in from our hospitality tax fund of about 3.5 million, and then a transfer in from our accommodations tax. So again, by state statute, we're allowed to transfer some of that fund, some of that funding in to, to cover our general fund expenses. On the use of fund balance, I do want to take a moment there to talk about this, since we have highlighted, you know, not using an unassigned fund balance. This full 10.2 million is use of assigned fund balance. So this is, as ACA Thomas mentioned, planned usage. So about six, roughly $6 million is capital use. So this is from, again, previous years where we knew we were collecting the capital millage, and we're planning to use that in the upcoming year. And then, as I mentioned previously, this is the, the $4 million of assigned affordable housing that is also shown here, so that makes up the full 10 million. On the next page, the, the revenues are further broken down. I feel like we've, we've touched on property taxes a good bit, so I do want to touch on some of the other areas that make up the general fund revenue. The, the next one under property taxes is license and permits. So really, this is, most of this is encompassing business license fees. You know, Zach and his team have done a great job with, with the third-party auditor to identify areas where the county can continue to grow business licenses. You know, as ACA Thomas mentioned before, we're proposing to add another revenue inspector to really capitalize and get the collections on the short-term rentals. And so that has definitely been an area that has consistently seen growth over the last couple of years. On the intergovernmental side, most of this is made up from the local government fund that is the county's allocation that's directly provided by the state. We are pleased to say that that has increased, and hopefully that will continue over the next few years. For charges for services, the majority of this makeup is our EMS fees, so our paramedic and ambulance fees here. And again, that's another area where we have consistently seen revenue growth year over year. But overall, the operating revenue makes up about 235 million. And overall, general fund revenue is 254 million, or about a 6% increase over the prior year.
You recognize, Councilman Brannan?
So the, the fiscal year 2026 projected, are these with the same number of mils collected as last year, or with the requested five, increase of five?
This is with the requested increase of 5 mils.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So at this time, we're balanced with the millage increase.
Councilman Weaver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Wilkerson, so the, going back a graph or two, professional services increases, that's a huge increase, 20 million to 27 million. Give me an example, like, what, what falls under professional services increases? Like, is that legal fees? Is that software? What is that?
It, it does encompass legal fees, but it's mostly like maintenance, so like for our facilities and grounds, any of our contracts would fall under professional services. For the detention center, it would be our, our food contracts, it would be our healthcare contracts. Really, any, when you think of a contract, that's what's hitting professional services. So anytime y'all are, y'all are presented with a contract through the A and F committee, and then, then to this, the full council, that's what's hitting professional services.
I have one more. All right, on page 14, you talked about use of fund balance. I understand we're lowering that, that's why the negative 28%. I got that. But on the 10 million, you said 6 million for capital. I didn't really understand the 4 million for affordable housing, because I'm on that committee. Why is affordable housing stuck in that?
Yeah, so this was assigned a couple of years ago. So when y'all assigned it, I think it was two years ago, if I, if I'm correct there. So when y'all assigned it two years ago, you said, we want to use $4 million out of the general fund for affordable housing. So what we do from the accounting side of the house, the finance side of the house, we actually assign that, kind of like earmarked it, in our fund balance, and so that it couldn't be used for any other purpose. So it just went into our assigned fund balance, because it hasn't been used yet.
So is that the 4 million ARPA funds, or is that 4 million county funds that we generated?
4 million county funds, because if, if I recall correctly, and ACA Thomas, you can step in, you know, originally, I think the conversation was to use ARPA funds, but since there was a deadline to use those, y'all decided to use county funds. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Recognize?
Yes, sir, Mr. Weaver. We actually repurposed ARPA funds for another purpose and assigned general fund to be able to, to, to have a longer term to determine what to do with those funds. So it was literally just moving the money from the general fund.
I understand, you're calling it something else, I get it. So we don't have 8 million, though, we only have 4 million?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to be clear, how much? Okay, just want to be clear, how much we have to spend? Thank you.
Yes, sir, so yes, that 4 million, there is a new special revenue fund that will be a salary stipulation. And so it's just moving it over there, and now it will be sitting in a different fund. It won't be in our assigned fund balance in the general fund. It'll be used for that purpose.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Brannan?
So we're talking about that transfers out line item on the expenditures, just now, right? Councilman Weaver?
I think it was use of fund balance, but it's, it's in both.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir, it's in both areas.
So 4 million of the 19 million is for the housing. And then, I'm just looking back at like 2024 actuals, so we're, we're increased by 10 million. What's the other 6 million?
Um, let me, can I pull up my laptop and tell you what it is? I apologize, I thought I, I thought I had it in my head, but let me just pull it up to give you all of the transfers out. Okay, so this makes up the 15 million, so we've already talked about the four. So about 5.6 million of it is the vehicle replacement. So that's our, our lease payments that we pay enterprise for. I do know this was a pretty large increase over '24, so that's probably a portion of it. We also have a lease payment due for our computers. So our computers are on like a three-to-four-year lease through IT. That's about $485,000. Our victim assistance fund is not self-sustaining. So there is a deficit of about $1.2 million that the general fund makes up to make that fund whole. I do know previously, this was about $950,000 a year that was budgeted. And, you know, in our act for, we've noticed that this consistently, $950,000 has not been enough to, to fund the victim's assistance. We also have a-
Is that also known as CASA, or is that different?
No, this is our victim advocates that work in the solicitor. We have solicitors, victim advocates, we have sheriffs, and we also have some detention center advocates. So that would not be related to CASA.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We also have about 1.5 million to fund the SRO program. So, you know, keep in mind, the SROs that, that are paid for through the contracts with the schools, it's about a 75-25% split, just due to the, the time that they spend in the schools. So the, the general fund does offset some of that. Additionally, public defender is about 4.8 million. This also, we, we only, the county itself funds just the personnel related to public defender. And there are some, you know, state appropriations and things that, that offset that, but we have noticed a decline in the state appropriations. So in essence, the, the county has to kind of intervene at that point. And then we also transfer roughly the value of half a mil to the economic development fund, so that's about 1.1 million. And then we have a few other, just kind of smaller ticket items with just the Title IV Sheriff Fund, the Title IV Family Court Fund, where they do not fund themselves, so those two combined are about $160,000.
Specifically, what pushed it up 4 million from the fiscal year '25 budgeted?
I would say the majority of it would be the vehicle, the vehicle lease program. So if y'all recall, this program was really initiated during COVID. And then there was a huge backlog on actually getting vehicles in. So there was a plan to, you know, have a lease payment each year. Well, I believe the county was unable to get the vehicles in, so the lease payments really didn't start until years later. And so, you know, there was really that, that backlog. So, you know, we're kind of playing catch-up a little bit on the lease program. And so, so I would say the majority, I don't know if ACA Thomas has anything else to add, but... Okay, so yeah, the majority of that increase is certainly due to the, the lease program.
Thank you.
And, you know, also just the, the changes, I believe that, you know, prior to that, there wasn't, you know, there wasn't a lease program, so there wasn't a transfer out, that's, that's a relatively new thing.
Yes, if I may, prior, you would have seen this as an expenditure or a bond issue, one of the two, to actually purchase vehicles. We went to a lease vehicle program to actually ensure that we had newer vehicles. We've actually reached a point now, though, that we've, we've sort of got a glut of vehicles coming in. So we've actually opted to forego it this coming year to get all of our vehicles onto the road, and then to actually renew next year.
Thank you, please continue.
Thank you. So the next few pages really go through the details of the general fund. So now I'm on page 17, or slide 17. So the, the first item talks about our largest departmental expenditures, and this does include personnel operating and capital expenses in the general fund. So we do, again, have the, the top 10 here. You'll notice the top three are public safety-related, with the sheriff, detention center, and EMS. And then we even have, if you go a little bit further down, the solicitor and coroner, which additionally would be considered public safety. So, you know, more, you know, about half of our top, top 10 largest departments are related to public safety. On the next slide, we broke this information down a little bit differently. We wanted to see what the highest increase was, and this was by percentage, and then also by dollar value. So the chart on the left looks at percentage. And, you know, keep in mind, you know, some of our smaller departments, their increases, their percentages seem a lot higher. So the first one that you'll notice is the community and government services. If y'all will recall, this was a department that's been with the county for quite some time and has not had a director in, I believe, quite a few years. So Dr. Harris has, is now going to be the Director of Community and Government Services. So his position has been moved there. And also, any, you know, expenditures related to that department have been added. So there for a while, that, that was kind of like a frozen department. So you'll notice what seems like a, a large percentage difference, but again, dollar-wise, not as much. The next one on your list is GIS. So every three years, they do have to purchase their software. It's about $86,000. So that's the majority of that increase there. Animal care, the majority of this increase is actually because we combined the animal care and vector control department. So, or divisions, I apologize. So that was always under, of course, the purview of Director Haynes. And they were, have been just shown historically as two separate divisions. They requested this year for those to be rolled up into animal care. So again, not necessarily a drastic increase, but it appears that way just due to percentage. Business Service Center, I think we've talked about this one a little bit with the new position, of course. And then IT, we have also talked about that with the majority of the software subscriptions. So those are, those really round out the top five. And then if you look at it from a, a little bit of a different perspective and, and focus on the dollar values, again, the top three are definitely related to public safety and the increases there, again, just due to the sheer volume of number of people in those departments. Whenever we do personnel increases, that's going to be the vast majority of, of the makeup of that difference. Any questions on those?
Oh, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the next slide really just graphically represents, you know, where our, our money goes as far as the general fund. Public safety accounts for about 56.6% of our cost. And you can, of course, see the breakdown here where we've, you know, included it. And what we think of public safety, we think of sheriff, detention center, EMS, solicitor, coroner, and planning. So you can kind of see that pie chart of the breakdown. But overall, that's about 56% of our budget.
And when you say planning, who are you including in planning?
ACA Thomas.
Madam Chair, that would just be the Planning and Soning Department and Building Inspectors.
Thank you. All right, so moving forward, again, all of this is in your full recommended budget book, and, and I'm happy to, to answer any questions if you, if something just sticks out to you. But what we've provided here is really just an overview of all of our departments. So you can see the department name. Again, you can see some historical information with the '24 budget, the '24 actuals, '25 budget, and what they requested versus what was recommended. You may notice, again, a few departments like vector control, operational services that really were combined into other departments. So you might notice a zero in the current year. But overall, the recommended budget for all departments is roughly 235 million. And I'm happy to take any questions on this overview.
Councilman Weaver?
Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. And I apologize if I missed this answer already. Going back to page 15, we've got property and other taxes. It's got 138 million and change for fiscal year '25, jumps to 152 million, which by my calculations is about a 10, well, you got it there, 10% increase. Does that assume the 5 mil increase for the general fund?
Yes, sir.
It does, okay.
Yes, sir, the, the budget at this time is balanced with the 5 million increase.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to remind everyone also is that by statute, we are required to present a balanced budget. So that is what we're trying to do.
Just for sake of argument, can you please explain what a balanced budget means?
Thank you. A balanced budget from a perspective, from a finance perspective, means that revenues equal, revenues and transfers out equal expenditures. And with this, we are proposing that this would be done without, by, but it would be accomplished as we would recommend, not using fund balance.
Please carry on.
Thank you. So now I am on page 24, which talks about our new positions that the administrator is recommending. So on this page, you will see that for the general fund, we did have about 38 new position requests. And again, these came in from all of our, our different departments within the county. And we met with each of these departments to get the background. And, and of course, they also submitted information along with the budget. We were able to, as ACA Thomas mentioned before, really take a look at our existing positions and any positions that had been frozen previously or had been vacant for quite some time. And the, the positions that the administrator recommended, we were able to essentially repurpose some headcount. And so it says, number of positions recommended is zero. We are recommending to fund some of these positions, but it does not add to the headcount. So here, do you want to just take a moment? We've, we've talked about the revenue inspector, that is a full-year position. Begin, because again, this position will definitely pay for itself with the revenue collected. There, there are two positions related to human resources, a training manager and then a class and comp analyst. Both of these positions are recommended to be funded starting January 1. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, can you, I know you're going through this, but is there a sheet that provides what these asterisks mean?
Yes, it's in your, it's in your RBB, I apologize, it's on page 30. So the asterisk essentially means that the position, it just means that it is not an additional headcount. And the-
Thank you.
The plus number means that it's funded all year.
For, for council, the RBB is the binder.
Oh, I apologize.
So if you turn to page 31 in your binder, it explains what all these notations mean.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So again, you know, HR, two recommended positions with a training manager and the class and comp analyst. Additionally, information technology requested a chief, I'm going to probably get this wrong, chief information security officer. Kyle?
Okay.
Thank you. Again, the plan there, or the recommendation from the administrator is to fund that position for half a year. And then the last position is with the solicitor's office. And you will see when we talk with the, or on Thursday, when we go into detail about special revenue funds, there's a position in the public defender's office that closely mirrors this request. And this position is for an assistant solicitor directly related to family court. I do believe we have Solicitor Gibson here, if he wants to add anything to that. I'll, I'll certainly defer to him, but I did want to, to mention that one as well.
Solicitor Gibson, did you have anything you would like to say, sir?
I didn't intend to put you on the spot at all, sir.
That's why he's here.
And thank you for yielding to me for a moment. So, so yes, as it relates to the family court, assistance solicitor, that's exactly what we requested. And we do thank you for that recommendation. It's needed just by sheer, by the sheer volume of matters that we handled last year with our family courts with two lawyers, over almost 1,900 cases. And that's not even talking about detention hearings and otherwise. So we're just tasked with doing a lot more with less, and we appreciate you looking out for us there. Should I go further with? All right. And there is, if, if it pleases the council for a quick moment, we did have an additional matter that we wanted to bring to your attention as well as it relates to victims' advocates. That's something that I know was a line item that you talked about earlier. And, and victims' advocates are required by the Constitution, by state law, we do have those. We have nine in our office. And, and between those nine, last year, they had about 16,000 or so contacts with, with victims and cases. When I say contacts, that's phone calls, that's hours of meetings, that's trials, that's sometimes week-long, like right now, we're in three major trials that are going on, well, two major trials going on right now, where our advocates are in the courtroom the entire time. What we're asking is, we, we're not asking for new positions right now. We're, we are asking that, as those matters have been funded through federal funding over the last several years, that funding has been decreasing by about 28%. And so we're called, it's called upon our office to now fund those out of our general fund. And now we're asking, and, and it's putting us in a position where we may have to cut those positions, which would mean we'd be down to seven advocates. And that'd be, you know, Greenville has 16, Charleston has 12, and we're, you know, right in line with the size of our counties and the number of cases. And we're online for having the same number of advocates that Beaufort County has, which is putting us behind the eight ball. And it puts us in a position where we're not as efficient as we need to be. We're not making the contacts we need to. And quite frankly, we can fall short and miss things if that happens. So we are asking to move some funding, well, to actually have those matters funded as true FTEs, so that we can assure that we'll at least stay with the nine that we have. Next year, we'll be asking for more, because we do need more. But right now, we just need to be able to secure these folks who have been in our office, many of them 10 years or more, and say, hey, you know, this is now an FTE. We're not going to have to let you go, we need you. Because right now, as, as you see in the news every day, we're stretched. And we're doing a lot with the least amount that we can, but we need to be better, more efficient. And we need to comply with the law and make sure that we're doing the best by wrestling counties we can. And we can only do that if we have full-time advocates who are there and funded, and who are not going to be looking elsewhere for employment.
Councilman Weaver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Solicitor, you know the issues we've had at Alvin S. Glenn and case backlogs and how long folks are staying down there. Would this assistant solicitor, would that help any in that regard?
The assistant solicitor would help only with the juvenile matters. And so it would help move those matters more quickly, more efficiently. So not as much with the, because, and those folk, the, the juveniles now are being housed differently than they were. So it wouldn't necessarily directly relate to that, because this would be the juvenile cases. So those who are 17 and under. The advocates would assist with moving those cases, because they'll have better contact with those who have been harmed, those who have been injured, those who are victims in our matters. And as long as we have good, solid communication and good addresses, all of those things that seem, they don't seem, they seem kind of minuscule, but they're extremely important with what we do. It helps us be more efficient, so that can help our efficiency.
Okay, and I may be catching you off-guard here, but has there been any progress on lowering the number of backlogs or days down at Alvin S. Glenn? I don't know if you're prepared to say that now, or?
There's, there's been a little, but it-
And I would say, please keep this as brief as possible, because we do, we're still in budget, and we have more information to go through. So if you can give that short and answer, that'd be great, thank you.
A little, not as, not as much as we'd like to see, but we, we, we're working towards that every day. Yeah, more, more, more hands-on deck help us move faster.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Baron?
Thank you, Solicitor Gibson. So should, should we decide to move these two positions for the victims' advocate?
Yes, ma'am.
To an FTE? I know, you noted that 28%, it's been a decrease roughly 28%. So if they go to an FTE, as long as the federal funds continue, then what you're ask, are you asking for supplemental funds to continue to, to fund those? So will you still use the federal dollars to fund these FTEs in conjunction with state, or with county dollars as an FTE?
Yeah, I think our position has been that we need to, and this is Hans Pauling, he's one of our Director of Affiliated Services, is to not rely on the federal funding, because we can't rely on it right now. And, and if that's, if that's cut off, which could happen at the drop of a dime, then we're not going to be able to fund those positions, we'd have to let them go. So just to have them outright as FTEs and not rely on that funding. Am I speaking out of turn?
Yeah, and we do anticipate the current grant funding is going to end before the grant cycle is over this year, which the county is, I believe, going to help us. But October 1, we, we don't even know if the grants are going to be renewed. And if they are, what the amount would be.
Okay, so, so in essence, let's, I know this is hypothetical- Okay, so, so in essence, let's, I know this is hypothetical, so if, you know, should we decide to fund these FTEs, and then God blesses us tremendously to get the grant renewed and get those funds, then those funds will be used in another, in another category or be moved another way, because I'm just trying to see how we can either match some dollars with these FTEs with federal funds, noting that they could very well disappear any, you know, at any moment, but, you know, I just want to know where those, because if you get the grant, you're going to get the funds, and could, we don't know what the amount is, of course, but where would you use those dollars?
Yeah, I mean, if the grants are funded at their current rate, we still know we'll be short next year, so we would just ask to be able to make up that difference.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's fair, but that's why we're here.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I just wanted, I wanted, that's where I was working to see, because I don't, I don't think you were just asking us, hey, give us two FTEs and the full salary and let us keep the grant money, but I wanted to make sure I was fully understanding. All right, thanks.
Councilman Weaver, I believe DJJ may start charging the counties more money for the kids at their housing, so we're also thinking about that in family court, even though they're not at Alvinas Glen anymore, we might get a bigger bill. Thank you.
No comments, sir.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Teresha?
Yes, I just wanted to make a really quick, this is not to do with the solicitor's office, but just looking at animal care, and I've had a lot of outreach from constituents with concerns about animal care and that department this year, so I know that we're investing in salary for that department, and then I also, just going back, I think page twenty, page eighteen maybe, was the increase, and I just wanted to call some attention to that in case folks are watching, that that's a department that's having some extra investment this year, and I don't know, other than the staff, if you all wanted to speak to what those investments look like, or if it's just increased cost.
Yes, sorry, real quick as we should, thank you, Solicitor Gibson, for that information, we greatly appreciate you all bringing that here this evening and sharing with us, and I just want to confirm before you all leave and we shift, did any other council members have questions related to the solicitor's office? Thank you so much. Director Wilkerson.
Thank you, Ms. Teresha, thank you for that question. I do want to clarify that with animal care, they were previously in two divisions, there was a division for animal care, and then there was a division for vector control, so we actually combined those, so I do, I do want to just point out that that thirty-seven percent really is just a, is the increase in the combination of those two divisions, not necessarily a true dollar amount increase, so the majority of the increase is just related to, you know, the staff, just like all of the other county departments.
Thank you. Any further questions related to requested new positions? All right, Director Wilkerson, you can continue.
All right, thank you, so we're really, we'll switch gears to the debt service recommendation, so this is on page twenty-seven of your presentation, so we'll start with the general funds, our general obligation bonds, so you'll see here, you'll see here our existing debt, so that's our current debt, in the first section, it's roughly fourteen point three million, we did have some debt roll off between twenty-five and twenty-six, so if y'all will recall, ACA Thomas has already spoken to y'all about a new debt issuance in the fall for the EOC and an additional wing at the detention center, so that is still planned for fall of this year, so calendar year twenty twenty-five, that debt amount is roughly eight point nine million a year for a seventy, roughly seventy million dollar bond. Additionally, we have some of our other functions here, so with FIRE, FIRE Special Assessment, the IP Revenue Bond, which is related to economic development. On the next page, we also have our millage agencies and the debt associated with those. I do want to just make a quick note that, you know, any new issuance of debt that has not been issued really as of, as of April, is not included in this information, so I know our school districts usually issue debt, and I think there, maybe Richland Two issues in May, I think Richland One might issue a little bit later, so do expect those when, you know, Auditor Brawley comes back with the actual millage levy, those will be increased. Additionally, East Richland has also requested about a ten million dollar bond issuance, so that will be added to their debt as well, but again, all of that information will come back to you really at the millage ordinance time, but just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of what the debt looks like today, and then, of course, the county plan debt that we already know about. But that is really all that we had today, I'm happy to take any questions or go into really what our next steps are.
Any questions related to debt service or general fund presentation? Councilwoman Newton.
Thank you, and so again, everything that I have in my little binder from before, I just recycle it, and then I put this in.
Yes, the only thing that you should keep in your binder is the enterprise worksheet, or the enterprise presentation that was done last Thursday, just to keep for your notes, but everything else can be recycled.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Recognize, Councilman Brenham.
So the fiscal year twenty twenty-six recommended column, is that what the school districts and other millage agencies requested and presented to us at the last work session?
No, sir, this is just related to their debt, so when they presented to you earlier, that was just their operating millage, so that was, that will be, and that's in your, our recommended budget book, closer to the front this year, is their actual requested amount.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, hearing now the questions, can you move forward, next steps, please?
Absolutely, so thank you all again for your time today, next up, on May fifteenth, so this Thursday, we have another work session, this will be for the, our grants and special revenue funds, that's from three to five, we also have, on May twenty-second, we have the public hearing scheduled in council chambers at six o'clock, on June fifth, we have our second reading on the FY twenty-six budget, and then third reading is scheduled for June seventeenth. Also, did want to remind you all that the motion period is open, hopefully you received my email, and there is a dedicated email address and form for your individual motions, but of course, you can always send them to ACA Thomas, myself, or Ms. Hammond, and we can make sure they're in the right place.
ACA Thomas, I'll ask this question to you, is there a way, I don't know if you have a separate tracker or way to inform us of maybe certain line items that you know were impacted by a reduction in federal funds, and so just looking at what the solicitor mentioned, his main reason for coming is the reduction of federal funds, he presented as if otherwise he would not have, do we, do we have any information that shows if there are other recommendations that have come before us that have that same reasoning?
Madam Chair, at this point, from the general funds perspective, we are not aware other than those that may be related to some grants, so they may fall into some of your special revenue funds, however, information coming out of the Washington area right now is very slow, but at the same time, it can slip, this can switch and be very quick, so at this point, we don't know, there's nothing other than what is, what may happen, we don't know at this point in time, sorry.
Thank you, that's helpful. All right, any further questions, comments, or thoughts related to the budget? All right, hearing now, we're at, I'm sorry, Director Wilkerson, did that conclude your presentation?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. We're at item four adjournment. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is taken for adjournment, Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.